Good evening. It's Thursday, May 30th, 2024, 7:00 PM. This is a special common council meeting of the City of Franklin. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Alderman Holfer is excused. Alderwoman Eichman?
Here.
Alderman Assam?
Here.
Alderwoman Day?
Here.
Alderman Craig?
Here.
Alderman Craig?
Here.
Excellent. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to Item B, Citizen Common Period. Any citizen wishing to speak, please approach the microphone at the podium. I'm not sure if it's on or not. We'll do a little test. And then state your name and address for the record. And three minutes maximum, please. And I'll keep time. Yep, it's on.
Good evening. Dale Kerner, 8630 West Hawthorne Lane. Do I get a per diem for coming to all these meetings? I think we're making progress with the sound. If you could just tweak it a little bit more. I was up at the Umbrella Bar last night going across to 76th Street. Maybe if they could just tip this, maybe raise the speakers, maybe tip them down a little bit so the noise is contained in that area. Mayor Nelson asked the other day, Saturday, did I hear the game? And I was not at home, but...
It was a simple yes or no question.
Yeah, I know, but I wasn't there, but it was...
I'm teasing you.
But I know that, but the fact of the matter is I didn't hear any neighbors' complaints. So that's, I think we're headed in the right direction. If you could just bring it down a couple more decibels, we'd be happy people. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Dale. I don't see no one else? I was almost gonna end it. Mr. Kleist, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. Again, I'll just echo his thoughts. I appreciate that you guys have really been willing to work with the neighbors.
Good call, Alderwoman. Could I please have your full name and address?
Andy Kleist, 6025 Parkview Road, Greendale. Just echoing his thoughts, I appreciate the work that you guys have been doing to try to address the noise issues. I really appreciate that. And also doing those sound checks, it's making some progress. And I hope to continue in this good forward progress kind of direction. But I am a little concerned about these concerts, that they're still gonna be an issue, especially in the summer as the evenings get later at night. You know, especially around 9:00, 9:30, things are really quiet down in this area, being in the middle of the suburbs. I noticed it last night. I checked in. I caught the end of the sound check. And it was pretty good. It seems to be pretty quiet towards the end of that. And that's kind of when things ended. And I think there'd be a big difference if we did a sound check later in the evening, like 9:00 or 9:30, I think. We might want to make some further adjustments with that. I live in Greendale, just on the north side of the property. And the concerts especially carry into our subdivision very well. I've had a lot of concerts where I can hear the lyrics word for word, what they're saying. And I'm concerned that's just gonna continue to happen even with this sound check. I'm hoping that you'd be willing to discuss some further preventative measures tonight within the council. One is that you follow Resolution 2024-8109, which includes the ordinance to be 45 to 50 decibels at the property line, depending upon whether or not it's before or after 10:00 PM. So I'm hoping that's something you guys will discuss with the council tonight. Secondly, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to lower the decibel level from whatever readings you had at that sound check yesterday by five decibel levels. I don't know exactly what the decibel level was, but I know they weren't sharing that information with neighbors. But it seemed to hit a certain level where they didn't really want to go down any lower. And maybe they could lower that by five more, just to see as a preventative measure. And then third is to consider ending concerts earlier than 10:30 PM. I did a look at a lot of different summer concert series around Milwaukee County, even south in Kenosha, north of Milwaukee. And I haven't found anyone that runs summer concerts outdoors until 10:30 PM. For example, Conco Park in Greenfield, theirs ends at 8:30 PM. Village Park in Brown Deer ends theirs at 8:30. The Hart Park out in Wauwatosa ends theirs at 9:30 PM. Harley-Davidson Museum Bike Night ends theirs at 9:00 PM. Same with Cathedral Square, the Deer District and the yard at Bay Shore Mall. All their summer concert series, they have regular ones throughout the summer. They end all theirs at 9:00 PM. Botanical Gardens near here ends theirs at 8:30 PM. And the Gazebo Park in Greendale ends theirs at 8:30 PM, too. So I'm hoping that you would discuss as a further preventative measure to further reduce the risk to neighbors and the effect of them, that you would end concerts earlier than 10:30 PM. So those are things I guess I'm hoping you would discuss tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kleist.
Linda Mathwick, 7321 Brun Drive. First, I would like to acknowledge and let all of you know that I do appreciate all your dedication to the City of Franklin. When I come up here, I tend to speak harshly. And I just want to know that your time and effort is appreciated. Tonight, I actually have a concern and then I have a question. Again, I'm new to the process of council meetings, and I'm unaware if these types of special meetings happen often. The timing of the approval for rock activities to get licenses and permits seems very rushed this year. The day before the Milkman season, they needed to get approval for the fireworks. And then now two days before the Umbrella Bar music, we're here once again at a special meeting trying to get approval. The neighborhoods around here were established before the Rock came onto the property. Prior to that, we had Crystal Ridge, which I was actually an employee at. And we had a very quiet setting at Crystal Ridge, and we were closed by 10 o'clock at night. So everybody knew that we would be closing down and turning off the lights at that time. Yesterday, I understand that there was a sound check. I live one air mile away from the Rock, a little bit more if I drive by car. And I could hear the music in my backyard. I couldn't hear the words, but I could definitely hum the melody of the songs that they were playing. So again, the decibel levels, I think, do need to be addressed. My question is, for license and permits, is there some type of timeframe that people are supposed to request these, like 30 or 60 days prior? And if they don't make that mark, they're just gonna be out of luck with what events that they have. I just was curious if there is some type of regulation that is in place that people are supposed to be abiding by?
Okay, well, I'll address your first point. March 29th is when this application was turned in for the Umbrella Bar Concert Series, number one. There were some things that had to be dealt with, and that's what prolonged this whole process. And number two, and I'm not sure if we've already got the 45-day rule. I thought it was a 45-day, that was the goal to turn in. But we're, you know, they turned it in and we're working on things. And that's, unfortunately, there's been hurdles and times. And that's the reality, unfortunate reality of this business. And that's why we tried to put it into a 45-day close time, like 45 working days.
But here we are, two days.
Oh, excuse me, 45 calendar days.
But here we again, we're two days here.
I know, okay. I'm with you.
I just don't feel that they deserve the consideration because their consideration towards the neighborhoods just have not been...
Very subjective. Okay, you're at 3 minutes 15 seconds. Thank you. Stop and reset. Good evening, Ms. Gint.
Thank you. Dana Gint, 9011 West Hawthorne Lane. I want to echo what everybody's saying, that I appreciate the effort. I haven't heard issues regarding the Milkman concerts. I can tell you that there is noise in the neighborhood, but it's a mumble. So it's not distracting or annoying.
You're saying Milkman concerts, you said?
I meant, sorry, the Milkman Games, yeah. And I don't, I think there's been eight games going on. I haven't had neighbors say anything regarding it being clearly audible or anything like that. There's clearly noise, but it's not annoying. You can sit on our patio and enjoy that. Having said that, obviously, the stadium is a different design than the Umbrella Bar because the stadium is a bowl. It has seating and berms for seating. So the sound is more captured in the seating area as opposed to the Umbrella Bar, which is a fully exposed, open-air concert venue. And obviously, it's one of the highest points in Milwaukee County as far as elevation goes. So I think there needs to be further consideration going that I think the decibel level needs to be brought down a little bit more, like five decibels at the speaker location. And I know I talked to Mr. Atkins, and there's, with his expertise, he was explaining that there's short throw speakers, so it only broadcasts 250 feet. So, I mean, I think the Umbrella Bar area is 100 feet, maybe, if you include the grassy areas. So obviously, it's reaching people sitting in the Little League and things like that. But I can clearly hear the sound check at my home, clearly audible, the lyrics and things like that for the music. So I think some adjustment needs to be done to lower it a little bit ladder, lower to see if that'll help address the noise issue. But obviously, there's been great progress made, and I appreciate that. The Milkman Games seem great. There just needs to be some further adjustment for the Umbrella concerts. And then, you know, that'll be great. And I agree that most concerts that I've researched are also ending at, I mean, 9:00, 9:30 at the latest. And so this, there needs to be consideration with that also, that this goes later into the evenings, and that it's obviously quieter at night. And so the noise carries farther and is more impactful. So I'd appreciate if you could reduce it five decibels and give that a try.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gint. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, both Citizen Common Period. Move on to Item C, Extraordinary Entertainment and Special Use License Application for the Rock Sports Complex Summer Concert Series 2024 at the Umbrella Bar, 7900 South Ballpark Drive, to be held every Saturday from June 1st through September 28th, and Thursday, July 4th, and Monday, September 2nd, 2024. So this item was brought back. Now for a special council meeting. Is there somebody from the Licensing Committee that would like to take the lead and start on this? For discussion, Alderwoman Eichman.
Thank you, Mayor. I was at the sound check last evening at the residence houses to on Hawthorne. And I also went to residence in Greendale. It's very interesting. I appreciate the time that the Rock put into it. It was, for those that weren't there, because we couldn't have everyone attend because it would have been a quorum, how everything can be controlled just by a cellphone now, including the base, which was adjusted. Mr. and Mrs. Knoll, who are not here this evening, their residence is very close to, where the noise filters down from the Umbrella Bar. And Mrs. Knoll had mentioned that the base was maybe a little bit too loud. So it was adjusted right there on the spot. It's amazing how technology can be done. It was also interesting, though, I found during the sound check, when we were at, in front of, is it the O'Donnell Residence next to Bernie, I believe? One of the homes right in that area, there was a dog barking very loudly. And I think that came up to about, that read about 100, was that? Yeah, 100. So while we were just standing there, a dog inside a house, probably wondering what all these strangers are doing, standing on his street. But the dog barking was at 100. Cars going down Rossin Avenue, as well as when I visited the Greendale residence, down 76th Street, Harleys, loud Harleys with the music blaring. It's summertime, it's, you know, Milwaukee. Convertible cars with the radios on, cars with their windows down with music playing. All sorts of noise. I mean, I reside on Rossin Avenue. I hear it where I'm at as far as the cars going, the traffic and so forth. I personally didn't hear any of the music when I was at the Greendale residence whatsoever. And the music was very filtered when I was on Hawthorne. We couldn't make out the lyrics. We didn't know the songs. So I just wanted to share with those that didn't make, that weren't able to come last night. And several of you had wanted to, but we couldn't because it would have been a quorum. And also, it was down to 49 was the decibel limit that we could barely hear it, was faint. And that was outside, standing in the front yard of a residence on Hawthorne. That, I'll yield if, Alderman Craig, if you want to add anything to that from last night?
Well, how about this?
Yes?
We have, I know they want to speak, and I want to go after this.
Sorry.
So why don't we do this? Are you yielding?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Alderwoman Day?
I can yield to Alderman Craig if there's more comments about the sound check last night. I have questions, actually, for, a couple of questions for the applicant, if we can bring them up, but...
Sure, I'll tell you, while we're going through these, Mr. Atkins, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the front here, at the front hot table. And then I could talk, or do you want to go, Alderman Craig?
I, it makes no difference, the order to me, so if you'd like to...
I would just like to, I was there last night for the sound check, you know, the normal table. I was with the sound check last night for the Franklin side. And my first thing is, is thank you to Mr. Atkins and the Rock team that showed up there. And were very patient and very accommodating to the concerns. And I, too, the first part of this was amazed on now, first of all, I was amazed that the first sound check we did at the Knoll residence with you and your magic laptop could control everything from one area. Now it's on your magic phone. So the ability to lower bass levels on your phone is, the technology is unbelievable. It's really impressive. And the fact that you could do that and then make it, you know, still within, under the 55. It was in the 40s at some point, then it was in the mid, low 50s. And, you know, it was also explained to the residents, again, the frequency levels and all. You did a great job, Mr. Atkins, is my point, you did a great job. I, too, heard the dog, and jokingly, and we were at, across from the Gint's house when the dog was doing that, and just jokingly, you know, you just quickly switched it to some decibel reading, and it was, I thought it was upper 90s. It was kind of, it was just in tongue-in-cheek and jest, but that's how quickly that can jump up. And whatever with that. But anyway, so it was good to get out there. It was good to also see what a wonderful neighborhood that is. And I had never seen the Gint House before, and just, you know, the huge trees. It's just a wonderful area, Franklin. It really is. It's a wonderful area, Franklin. And it was, it was nice to see the roads holding up well, the new road that was put in. And there's a lot of positives, but just going out there, yes, we were talking about noise. But it was also seeing other neighbors interact. I spoke to some of the neighbors as we walked back, you know, that were very supportive of the Rock and didn't have any issues with noise. They made that a point. And it's just, it was just a very nice evening last night. So, Mr. Craig?
I would also like to say that I am very appreciative of the efforts from Mr. Atkins, the Rock, and all of the work that is being put forward to be accommodating. I think that is, is not something that is lost. And I think it's something that needs to be applauded as far as what you're doing. Along with that, echoing what Alderwoman Eichman made mention of, when Ms. Knoll's, you know, had her comments of what were her areas of concern, that you very quickly resolved them and gave her opportunity to say, is, and you asked her, like, is this better? And she went inside and came out, big smile on her face, gave you the thumbs up. And that right there is, like, that is exactly what we're looking for as far as corporate partners being good neighbors. And I think that's, that is not something that is lost upon me. And I don't think it's lost on anyone else on the council here as far as the willingness to be flexible with, with the residents. So, and I appreciate the work of making yourself and other employees of the Rock available for, you know, activities like last night and a couple of weeks ago, of being able to operate and being able to say, here, let's, let's figure this out so that way we're able to be happy with what we're doing, you are happy with what we're doing. And, you know, the comments about where we're going with the Milkman Games, for example, I think is fantastic. And I, and I really applaud everyone involved, yourself and all the others, that is this something where we're seeing progress. And I think we definitely are seeing progress as far as it goes. I think that that's, that's exactly what we're trying to drive towards. And I thank you for the flexibility and the willingness to compromise and to adapt for the residents, you know, your neighbors, really. So, thank you.
Alderman Day?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions about some things from last night, and then a couple of questions about the application. So basically, I think, you know, the, the Ms. Knoll, it's never gonna be, it's never gonna be silent. I mean, I think that's an unrealistic expectation, that there's never gonna be no sound that is heard from, from events going there at every residence. Because there's, you know, residents that are in Greendale and Franklin, stretching all around. So I think one of the things, and I believe that you did this last night, and I appreciate that because I had asked the mayor about this yesterday, earlier in the day, because I couldn't attend the sound check, was to, you know, monitor the sound at different points along the way for some of those neighbors. Because what it is at the monitor, you know, what it is in the Knoll's backyard is different than what it's gonna be in someone else's backyard, just by virtue of tree coverage and how the wind is blowing and whatnot. So I think, you know, and thank you for going around and doing that because I think, you know, when you, when we say we're dialing it into a certain decibel limit, you know, understanding that, that is, that limit at the sound monitor, that may not be the exact sound that it is at somebody else's residence. And that's okay, because we can't make it be that decibel level everywhere. Just, it's not possible.
If I may respond to that?
Absolutely.
So, so, well, yes, we can go and monitor in different locations. The, the noise floor, so the ambient noise level was above what the Umbrella Bar sound system was. So we actually weren't measuring anything, to be honest with you. So we were measuring ambient noise at that point.
That's, that's excellent. So can I, so I just wanted to make that, that point, that, you know, what somebody hears at one house may not be what somebody hears at another house. And that, that is normal, and that is to be expected.
Yes, I mean, sound is a tricky thing. It reflects, it responds to wind, to barometric pressure, to temperature. So, you know, on any given day, even though the volume may not be higher or lower, it can sound vastly different depending on where you receive it.
So the best we can do as the council, and the best that we can, you know, hold you to as, as the operator, is to pick a point and then have that point be the point of reference. So I think that's what we're trying to do and accomplish tonight, is what is, what is that point, the sound monitor, and then what is that point of reference? So I know there was mention by Alderwoman Eichman that at one point, there was a registered, a registered sound of 49. You were saying at some points it wasn't registering at all from, from the...
Right, so, so when I, when I say that, the, the ambient noise of...
Right, was higher than the noise that was coming from, yes.
Was higher than the Umbrella Bar. So what we were measuring wasn't actually the sound coming from the Umbrella Bar.
And, and what I, what I'm looking to do is make life as easy as possible for us as a city to, to monitor and enforce if there's anything going sideways, for you as the business owner to be able to put forth a product and for the neighbors to understand what is going on. I, I think the most important thing is for us to be as consistent as possible with noises so we don't have to have some sort of fancy Venn diagram for the police department to follow, that this is this event, and this is the sound, and this event, this is the sound. I, I think if we can come to a happy resolution. So I, I'm thinking that maybe kind of the sound level we've agreed to in, for other events might be something that we could come to an agreement with this evening because it seems as such that when you were doing your sound check yesterday, that noise from the Umbrella Bar was not hitting that level.
I would encourage you, and as a city, you guys now have this data of the daily decibel averages that Larson Davis application that will be made available on your website is now accessible to you. I would encourage you guys to review that data prior to making any decisions because I think the daily averages would be something that you would want to see.
So then my question, then, about, just about the application itself. There were two dates on here. There's a, there's a Thursday date and a Monday date. And I had asked previously, and I believe it was, it was agreed upon. I just want to reiterate that, you know, now that we're talking about the application as a whole again, to have those end at 10:00 PM because that's how, I understand that the day, July 4th and Labor Day, September 2nd, are holidays. But the day after is not a holiday. So I had asked, and I believe at the time, yourself and Ms. Hoffman had agreed that for those two dates, it would end at 10:00 PM instead of the 10:30.
Yes, that's an accurate statement.
I just wanted to make sure that that was still gonna be something that we could put in for, for the potential approval tonight, that for those two dates, it would end the half hour earlier to be congruent with.
Yep, that is an accurate statement. We did agree to that in licensing.
Okay. And then my last question for you is just about the speakers that are now set up at the Umbrella Bar, the sound system at the Umbrella Bar. Were, are they on, are they on poles? Are they on the Umbrella Bar structure itself? How did you?
So at the stage area, at one time, we actually had a canopy over that stage. So there were, were posts that exist. These speakers are now mounted to those posts. So they, the bottom of the speaker is approximately seven feet off the ground.
Okay. Great. So it's not like booming, you know, 20, 30 feet in the air on top of the hill?
No, it's not. Not high.
Up above everything. Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
One thing on those speaker mountings, as it was mentioned earlier, are the speakers like this, or can they be tilted down a little, I mean, a little? How are they fixed? So, and are they movable? Because if, I, you know, I'm obviously a noise guy, but if they're up here and they're pointing down a little bit, that kind of keeps things this way opposed to outward and upward.
Sure. Yeah, to be 100% honest with you, right now, they're at about a five-degree tilt. I could see them go into maybe a 15-degree tilt. And I'll say this to the, to the residents, that all this system is new to us as well. So it, while I've tuned it and tweaked it to this point, we haven't actually had a band there for me to be able to continue that process.
Sure.
So I, I am open to adjusting them, and quite honestly, they might need to be adjusted some. But I won't know that until I get into a live environment. Playing, playing music through speakers is very different than playing a band, so.
So right now, you said they're a five-degree down?
Yes.
A little bit, and you're open to at least trying maybe up to a 10 or 15? Good. I'll yield, Alderwoman Eichman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention, and for Alderman Day, to just so you're aware, we didn't just stop at one residence last night. We actually kind of did a walking tour down Hawthorne. We were, we first met at the Knoll's residence. And then we walked down by Bernie's, which is, Bernie's backyard faces the Rock. And then Dana lives across the street from Bernie. So we, we kind of traveled around a little bit, and that, that wasn't too far from Mr. Kerner's house either. So, and then some of us went to Greendale, too. So there's like, what would you say, three or four different times? And, and then also, I wanted to add along with that, and I greatly appreciate the patience of the Rock staff that was there last night. You took your time. You weren't in a hurry. This is your busy time of the year. You're just starting out the season. They were incredibly patient because, for example, Bernie, who isn't here this evening, they waited for Bernie to go upstairs into his son's bedroom, his son wasn't home, to see if he could hear the music. I believe Dana went into her house, too, to see if she could hear the music. Mrs. Knoll and Mr. Knoll, I know Mrs. Knoll for sure, went into her house. So it wasn't like we were just all standing outside. They were patient. They let everyone take their time. A lot of these residences are two stories, so to go up the stairs, go in the bedroom, see if they could hear it, you know, it wasn't like a one, two, three fast sound check. It was, you know, a lot of time was consumed into it. So that's just information I wanted to share with the rest of the council since everyone couldn't be there.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you for your...
So there is a motion on here, and I think the only thing we need to add to the motion would be that the time on Thursday, September, excuse me, Thursday, July 4th, and Monday, September 2nd, the ending time would be 10:00 PM. Other than that, the motion should stand. Alderwoman Day?
I believe we have to add, per our last council go-around with this, we need to set a decibel limit for the police department.
Kelly?
Kelly, microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Can we have a contact for the police department and staff just for those live concerts?
Sure.
Because, you know, per your comment, just in case we're getting calls, we can contact you, see what you can do first before we're taking things to a different level?
Yeah, so, so I'll respond to that, and I have an additional comment as it pertains to that. My number, I think, is now probably distributed to about half the City of Franklin. So people can feel free to, to contact me. The police have contacted Chris Conley, who's here with me tonight, and that's an acceptable contact as well. As well as the permit applicant, Ms. Hoffman, would be an acceptable contact for, for any of these. I do want to comment, though, that while we were doing the sound check last night, there was a noise complaint that, that Chris received a call on. And so I think we're setting a very dangerous precedent here by putting a limit on these because even though we had not exceeded it, even during a sound check, we received a noise complaint. So, and, and I said this during the sound check last night, I'll say it before the council tonight, just because something is necessarily audible doesn't mean it's a violation of a decibel level. And, and as we saw last night, you know, with a couple spikes above 55 into the 60s, but for the most part in the lower 50s, we were well within what the current ordinance tells us we need to be within.
So I can speak to that. We're not... Staff has a memo that we are going to be working off of. We realize that this is, just to your point, with the concerts and live, live bands, there's going to be some tweaking and adjusting. But we realize that this document is also going to require adjusting as we go forward. However, first and foremost, we're going to be making sure, and this is part of the reason why we really wanted that sound system on our website and the ability to access it, is we don't want to send out law enforcement officers with every complaint. We want to be able to access the monitoring system, confirm that it is a sound coming from the Rock, and then deal with it from that point forward. Not just send an officer out or issue tickets or what have you. issue tickets, or what have you.
And, and I'll read through this fully, but, I just, so now that these trigger levels on these monitors, at Planning Department's request, have been changed to the fifty-five, in just a twenty-four-hour period, seventy-five hundred files were created, so, if, if that is what your standard is going to be, you're going to have to employ some full-time people just to review that.
Yeah, so, we're not, we're not looking to review the sound system every day, all day long, it would be by complaint, and then we would look at that clip and listen to that, and, and obviously, if it's not a noise that's generated by The Rock, it's, it would have to be handled differently than what's on this memo.
Sure. Alderman Barber, then, Alderman Day?
As long as everybody's speaking anecdotally tonight, I just want to say that I moved here thirty-three years ago, and I used to listen to the Speedway every Friday and Saturday, sometimes Sunday afternoons, and I could hear that on Sixtieth and Drexel, I could hear the words very clearly, I could hear the noise of the vehicles, and there weren't any complaints about that at the time, there was nobody to complain to, there wasn't this awareness that we have now. Right now, on Sixtieth and Drexel, I can hear the high school band playing every night, I can hear the announcer at the football games, I can hear the announcer when he's practicing. So, what to me is a noise level that's tolerable versus hearing noise is what's key here. What people get in their living room is what's key here for me. I, I would say we, we go with the fifty-five, as this lays out right now, I know you're willing to work with us, and I appreciate that, I have utmost of respect for you in terms of trying to work with the citizens and the community here, I think it's a document that can be tweaked in the future, as new data comes in, and as we're monitoring it, and as there's more reaction from the community, so, my suggestion would be to keep it at the fifty-five right now, and then we'll work with that, you're obviously trying to accommodate that, and then there's, there's going to be spikes, but if you get a complaint, like you said, then possibly then there might be something that is spiking more and more, and we have to look at, that's the way I see that.
Right, right, yeah, I mean, like I said, we realize that this is going to be a work in progress, but we are very thankful that we have a willing partner to work with us, to make sure that it's a success for both the business and the community.
Alderman Day?
Okay, so I'm gonna, I know there might be further discussion, but I'm going to take a stab at a motion to include...
Mr. City Attorney?
Some, oh, yes, there's that, you would like me to do that?
Well, that's what has to start it.
Yeah.
Well, technically, the last council meeting this was at, the motion was to put over to a special meeting, so that the applicant can confirm the sound system is installed and operational, to have done a sound, sound study check, that can provide decibel levels, and that the software's operational on the city website, I understand the software's not operational on the city website yet, so, technically, in terms of process, to continue to move forward and act on this, the motion should be, if there's a motion, if there's a motion to approve, that it should be notwithstanding that the software is not yet operational on the city website.
Yeah, I was, I was, I thought you were going to say operational period, so I wanted to caution that it is operational, and we can access it, we just, we're working through some minor admin policies, that we need to ensure that anybody can go on our website and access it, and what it should be available, and what should not be, you know, what should be sort of behind the scenes for the appropriate parties.
Okay, sorry, yes, so, with, with that in mind, so, the, that particular motion that was made to table slash, I think it was put over, we reconfigured the, the language, listening back to the recording, that we were holding over, putting over to a meeting not tabling, and the, the sound system being operational on the city website, for me, being operational, that we can check it, is, is the key, that it's up and running and we can see it, is, is key to me, and given the, what transpired yesterday with, with the sound levels, and knowing what we know now, I'm comfortable moving forward with, with that piece, knowing that it is operational, and that in the near future, people will be able to see it in real time, but if there is a noise complaint, they can make it using this process here, and we have a way to go back and, and double-check that. So, with that being said, the motion that is written here with the addendum that the concert dates on July Fourth and September Second would end at ten PM instead of ten-thirty, we would set a decibel limit at fifty-five to be congruent with other events at The Rock at this time, and I would also like to add to it that we would revisit this, perhaps at the June Eighteenth meeting, maybe have it be an agenda item, that we could have a representative from The Rock, as well as someone from Planning, maybe give a report out on how that, how that is going, and if there's been complaints, and we can adjust at that time, that way, I understand what you're saying, that gets you, you know, three, three weeks' worth of concerts to kind of, you know, reconfigure things, if, if something is not going right in, in either direction, that we can then kind of reassess at that point.
And I'd like to make the second.
So, we've got a first and a second, roll call, please.
With also the...
Oh, hold on.
Notwithstanding.
Okay, so, hold on, so we have a first and a second, Mr. City Attorney first, and then Alderman Craig.
Alderman Day said that that was the initiation, the start of the motion she was making, that it's being made, notwithstanding that the software information is not on the city website yet.
Okay, we've got a first and a second, Alderman Craig.
I'd like to amend the motion to change the decibel limit to fifty decibels, the reason behind my, my, my thought process is, with the baseball at fifty-five, there's a lot of lull between what is being broadcast, with a concert that is continuously at a level that may or may not be something that can be viewed as, as a nuisance to, to others around, it's just the breaking between the, the broadcasting that, I, I would like to see maybe a, a step backwards, as far as a, a volume level goes, to allow for that because of the continuous broadcast.
How about this, Mr. Craig, what if we revisit that as part of the June Eighteenth meeting, and see where we're at with the decibel readings that have gone through, any noise complaints set at the current fifty-five decibel? Opposed to trying to put something now at fifty, to lower it, when all these sound checks have been very successful, it's at fifty-five, our ordinance is fifty-five, we're going to look to come back anyway, June Eighteenth, with a report to see, do we have complaints, do we have issues over fifty-five? I think that would be a prudent way to look at it, and still recognize your concerns after, at the June Eighteenth meeting.
I would need to make sure that this actually is something that is an actionable item on the Eighteenth, and would be something not just for review and place on file, that there would be...
Possible action.
Possible action.
How about the term possible action is put on the Eighteenth of June's council meeting, when this goes back for review, and possible action?
I would feel much more comfortable with, with the language, being able to take action if necessary.
Mr. City Attorney, then, Mr. Barber.
There has been substantial discussion at common council meetings regarding the decibels, and I've said what I've said, and you still have that seventy-nine in one portion of the code, and the other portion of the code is the fifty-five decibel limit, and that's the P-one park, which is the background for the planned development district ordinance, to go below what's in the code, and I started this out back February or whatever, there's a unified development ordinance update going on, and to try and do that as soon as possible, and that process to not get going, and part of the review of that would be to reference the, then, if you're trying to reduce decibel levels that are in the code, you would have to work with the Milwaukee County Sound Study, and in effect, declare the subject matter of the facts to be a public nuisance, because then existing code limits could be reduced because it is a public nuisance, and so that process would have to be followed to reduce decibels, so, I would recommend that it not be lower than fifty-five, which is what's in the unified development ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
I, I think The Rock wants to work with us, we'll have three events that we'll have under our belt at that point for the Eighteenth, and that will give us some data, and we could, I hope that it's just not, the next three events aren't just harmonica, so you can get a true test out there of what is being broadcast, but I, I think the fifty-five could stay there, and then if you're, wherever we're at with that, that would maybe cause us to look at options at that point, but, we'll have three events, so we can actually see what, what the date is and how it's coming through.
Excellent, do you yield, sir?
Yes.
Okay, we got a first and a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Eichmann.
Hi.
Alderman assigned.
Hi.
Alderman Day, go. Alderman Barber.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
No.
Four ayes, one no, one absent, motion carries.
Could I get that motion as, as written on record, so that I understand what exactly was just approved?
I can say it to you.
Yes, Madam Clerk will do that. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
First and a second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Any polls, it says a motion carries, we are slowly going on.